Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mentzer, Chair of the Board. To my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Forney, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioners Emily Clausen, Commissioner Kelly Mejia on Zoom, Head County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Josh Cummings. Clerk of the Board Jamie Davis. Public virtual attendance on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Public written comment may be received. Up to two hours in advance of the meeting would be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up on the morning's agenda is Executive Session. Is this with, no, without counsel?
This is without counsel.
So we have 4232-110-1D. Consider selection of site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase. In public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Habitat Conservation Plan is a topic. Twenty minutes allotted. So we will go into Executive Session until 9:24.
Chair, I think we may only need fifteen minutes if we can start that.
Then 9:19. Okay, Board is out of Executive Session. It is 9:19, right on the dot. And so we are not taking any formal legislative action. So we're going to move on to the next item, which is a review of the Board of County Commissioners Agenda for this afternoon in the Board Meeting. Pull that forward. We've had several updates of various sorts, and the Clerk has made note of those. So we'll be going to the highlighted items that, okay. Just upfront, let me confirm we're initiating the new public comment procedure.
Yes.
New land acknowledgement as well?
Yes.
So that'll all be good? Then we'll start with Pledge Allegiance led by District Four Commissioner Forney.
As far as the new public comment, I think you already mentioned it, but as far as the new public comment period, we let people know, we did a lot of press releases. What is the... I know you've got it figured out. How will we manage or mitigate any confusion on the fly? I'm sure you've thought that through.
Well, I mean, we'll do an advisement again upfront, and I'll kind of probably explain it in a little more detail than I will in the future, just in terms of like explaining that we have a business agenda with a number of items. Consent items are fair game as well as department items, but the first public comment period would be confined to comment on those items that are contained on today's business agenda. We'll have an open public comment period later on on the agenda under item... I'm assuming it's on here toward the end? Yes, under item 13. And then, you know, typical, if somebody, you know, probably have to be general upfront with people about trying to stick to the rules, but it takes some time to get people...
We'll have two different signup sheets.
Ask the Clerk about that.
Sorry, yes, we will have two different signup sheets. They will both be pulled at 2:00 p.m.
Okay, and I may have to make, people get confused on the signup sheet all the time. Like if there's a public hearing out there, I sign up on the wrong sheet. So that won't be the gospel, but try to.
Did you move the script, Chair? I know that there was something being considered, but we can change it for today while you still consider some other thing.
Yeah, let's talk about that at the lunch break.
Okay.
Should we label them differently, or is the subtext sufficient? Like we call one the formal public comment period and the other the informal public comment period, or do you think the subtext?
I think the subtext pretty much lays it out.
Would it be easy enough to put like either the same written blurb that you read out or something really similar, like right next to the signup sheets for people to either pick up and have in front of them or just look at when they're signing up, just in case people are like more visual when they process information?
Like what?
Like the same thing you say.
I just said I was going to say that I haven't necessarily written down yet. Like the public comment guidelines on the table. Think about that.
Yeah, like the script that the Chair reads, just have it right there on the table, maybe a couple copies for people to pick up and take to their seats, at least for this time, if not every time. I know it's...
If I can get it down and it sounds correct, I can buy some copies of that. Okay, good. Then we'll have Pledge Allegiance, Slant Acknowledgement, Privilege of Agenda. Then we'll have three presentations under item two, Certificate of Recognition for Under Sheriff Pierceall. I'm not going through all these, but I guess I should jump to the first, Women Voters in Thurston County Consent Proclamation.
Consent proclamation was added to the agenda after the Board provided direction last week.
Okay, and as a consent proclamation, remind me how I'm handling that, because we've only done that like once.
We'll have a script for you for that. We will have one speaker, but a handful of groups in attendance to support them.
Yeah, and then we don't break for recess.
Okay, the consent part means we're not doing recess, a photo, all of that.
Absolutely.
One speaker, I'll read the blurb, we'll move on. Questions there?
Do they have a presentation to show?
We have a short presentation.
They have a short PowerPoint that we'll put up that they've sent to us in advance and we've reviewed. So I think it'll be pretty contained. The speaker will just walk through some really great looking pictures.
Yeah, it's pretty.
For the women's vote thing?
Yes.
What are we doing for the, for Under Sheriff Pierceall?
We have a certificate of recognition for him. We'll prepare a few remarks for the County Manager, and our plan is to take a photo with the Board and...
Okay.
Just in front of the dais, yeah.
Not on the stairs? That's our new photo spot.
We certainly can.
Yeah. Okay, that'll be cool. Thank you. Okay, so then we'll have our public comment related to items on the agenda. County Manager update?
The only update I have is a quick note about our county engineer who was seated on what?
The Washington State Association of County Engineers.
Washington State Association of County Engineers. So we're really proud of him. We'll be here and give him recognition. We're excited to see him taking steps to not only advance himself, but represent the county in a higher way.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Cool. All right, so our next highlighted item, if we move to item six, is the item we discussed in Executive Session related to Habitat Conservation Land Acquisition. Questions on that? I don't know if there's any more briefing from the Board. Okay, let's move to item seven, Contract Award for Official County Newspaper.
This is a new item added to the agenda. It is the contract for the official county newspaper for the term of July 1, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, and it will be awarded to the Niskuale Valley News.
Does this have to be an annual thing?
Yes, for our C W.
Do we get multiple bids?
We did not.
Any questions on item seven? Did the bid come in same as last year, lower than last year?
It was just about the same as last year.
Okay.
And we're really thankful for Niskuale's approach to working with us on timing of posting, getting things out, that they have been great partners in understanding that there are certain timeframes when we have to release information, and they've made some accommodations. So we're glad that they bid.
Okay, let's move along then. We have items that have already been reviewed. Let's go to 14 and 15, our appointments to the Fair Board.
These are new items added to the agenda that the Board provided direction on last week.
That's, okay, I do remember that. Questions on that one? Item 20 is a voucher list from June 2nd.
This item was, sorry, go ahead.
Ad, that's an ad?
Yes, it was an ad, just with summer recess coming up, so we can get it quickly processed for financial services.
Okay. Then let's look at Department Item 62, Ordinance Amending Thurston County Code 2.104 to Regulate Disposition of Public Property for Affordable Housing. We have the document in the packet this morning.
Patley comes to home plate to get ready. I wanted to mention that this is the item that we discussed, and it was requested by the Board Direction to add in notification language, and I want to thank the staff, central service staff, folks who coordinated to get that language added in. So if I haven't sufficiently stoled your thunder, Rick, I want to start with that, please.
Yes, Rick Thomas, Capital Project Planning Manager, and it's still almost all of it, but definitely fine. This really, yes, this is just to follow on to the public testimony that we heard on May 20th. It was very well accepted by the community with one question back to the Board, and that would have to do with having some sort of a public notification to surrounding properties before the Board would actually take official action to transfer whatever surplus property we might want to for affordable housing. And so we did work with council, with our FNO's office, to add an additional paragraph to provide 30-day notification to surrounding property owners, depending upon if you're in the UGA or not. Just going to say kind of within about 500 feet of the property. So we would send out some sort of a postcard or notice to the property owners, letting them know of the proposed action that the Board would take. If any comments were received, the Board could certainly consider it before they took their final action. But this was really the citizenry coming back and asking to make sure there's total transparency from the Board for these types of actions that could have some impact with the neighbors. So everything else is the same in the ordinance and for the amendment to the code that we presented before. We're just simply adding that one last paragraph for the 30-day notification.
So it's only 30, it's six, they give them 30 days to say something to us. Is, and in that 30 days, there's going to be some guaranteed opportunity for them to come before us? Is that what?
The way that it's written is we basically will send some sort of a notification to them. I am assuming it's going to be in letter form, mail form to them, basically outlining what the county commissioners are proposing to do in regards to a property transfer. It's not going to ask for comments or anything like that per se. It's just going to simply notify them that this is what the Board is proposing to do.
And there will be a contact. If you have questions or concerns, please contact us. If we don't hear anything, then we won't say anything. But if we receive input back from neighbors, we'll bring that to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration.
As we advance, and then the item would have to come before the Board for official vote. So it'll be the agenda reviews, and then the other, that's when staff would communicate if we receive outreach from the neighbors.
So that directly relates to, so the consideration for today is to change the code to add the 30-day notice, which if the Board approves that, has the follow-on effect of we're going to have to wait to do the property transfer to homes first. That's why homes first is not on the agenda. That'll come when you return from recess, after we've completed the 30-day notice to the neighbors of that area.
We'll report out if we hear anything from the public.
30 days is standard, adequate?
It's what we, we took the language from our land use code, just directed by the Board of County Commissioners, and placed it in this. Made it appropriate for this code. Made it appropriate for this, um, code.
Yeah, we believe it's, we believe it's called standard and adequate.
And this wouldn't happen except for only in situations when the land is gonna be transferred for these purposes? In other situations?
It's written as disposition of the affordable housing properties.
Okay.
I did share it with constituents that came in and provided a public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item, uh, that's newer, altered, to be reviewed, is Human Resources eight, number two. Resolution extending recruitment incentives program for lateral deputy sheriffs and corrections deputies. This one, I think I was having trouble figuring out the difference. What was changed?
This one isn't new or is, um, revised. It was just pulled from consent and is now a department item.
Oh.
Um, I know that I presented, uh, with the sheriff, uh, a number of details about the program. Don't know if you have any additional follow-ups.
Well, if it's just a pull from consent, maybe there aren't questions. Are there any questions? All right, there are no questions. Should we move it back to consent? It was yours, right?
Yeah, this was mine. I decided to pull it from department items and, um, I'm just looking over my notes. I'd like to keep it on department items. Um, I think there are one or two more questions I have that I can just round up the answers to during our lunch break. But I appreciate the work that Maria and the sheriff's, uh, sheriff's office staff have done in getting me the answers to my many questions I had on this topic. I was primarily concerned about potential indirect costs that we, that might be associated with this. If we have, um, new deputies and recruit, like, deputies who have recruited others with these leave banks that then potentially could impact overtime costs. If people are taking leave in abundance compared to, like, the norm, since they have to use all their leave in one year. So that could potentially hike the rate of overtime. Not the rate, but the amount of overtime hours that we're paying out. So that was one concern and it doesn't...
Is that answered?
Huh?
Is that answered? Because I think, wasn't it, it was, it was that they can't use it in a situation that would create overtime?
I don't think necessarily. I think it said it would be considered, but I could be wrong. Maria, do you happen to know?
Well, because they have minimum staffing, it's an evaluation that they would do at the time.
Yeah, so i- if it puts them below the minimum staffing, they wouldn't be able to use that.
That's my understanding, but I would want confirmation from...
Yeah, we'd have to ask the sheriff.
I thought the sheriff directly answered that, I thought.
He did too.
I have the answer right here in front of me that, um, it was difficult to quantify due to variability in overtime. And that, of course, we know not all we've taken from the incentive base results in overtime usage. But, um, the amount of overtime that is used was difficult to quantify, which makes sense because it's a relatively new program. But one of the things that I was gonna request with this item is if we're asking to extend the, um, program until October, then, um, that's information that I would like to see tracked and reported back on by October. I think that gives us enough time to try to track that specific metric since it kind of, I think it's important for us as we evaluate the budget when we get asks like this. And, um, in addition to the overtime question, I was also considering, um, any potential equity concerns that might arise from other departments and offices not having the same ability to offer leave banks. And I know we talked about how this was a special situation. But that's just something I would like to consider and look at agency-wide. If other, um, departments and offices don't have this ability to offer incentives like this as well. And I think that that was maybe answered. I have quite a few notes from the responses that I got.
Commissioner Mensah spoke to that.
You mean when he said that that was, um, a special situation?
Yeah, there was kind of an apples and oranges scenario.
Because it's a very narrow recruitment tool. It's only for lateral deputies coming from other law enforcement agencies. So it's not like every brand-new deputy, um, is a part of this program. And so that's, that's how it was developed. So it's, agency-wide would be...
It's fairly market, you know, or industry-specific. If we're, you know, if we're talking about other departments, the, the market rate for those positions is, is, you know, kind of considered differently and, you know, they, they have different requirements for when they're hired. And so if we say, if we hire somebody from, you know, a different department, it's not necessarily required that they go through a, you know, twenty-one-step hiring process that involves light, you know, polygraph tests and mental evaluations and physical evaluations, followed by a, a eight, nine-month recruit academy. And so like the cost of onboarding, uh, an entry level in C P E D is much different than the cost of onboarding a la- a deputy. So we're able to minimize those costs by hiring laterals who have already met those qualifications. So we save the county money by offering this type of program. And it wouldn't necessarily, that scenario doesn't exist for, like, a heavy equipment operator in, in public works.
Yeah, I understand that. And I think that's one of the good things about this program, that we can market to the public when we are talking about this because the cost savings is so significant. And that's clear when we look at the numbers, um, as, as far as, like, cost savings for the lateral deputies that we have hired. So that is a good thing. That's a positive component of this. I just want to make sure that we're turning over every rock to make sure that we are considering all of these things and how it might impact other offices and departments. Regardless of how specialized the, the field is, I think that it's important to consider, um, like, you know, the recruitment and retention struggles that everybody's facing, especially as we're moving into budget cuts. And so, yeah, those are just some things I'd like to have tracked. And we also, you know, have other costs to consider, like the nineteen percent, you know, increase in the new ratified contracts for corrections officers. Um, I'm wondering if that in and of itself will be enough of an incentive to recruit people without needing to offer additional incentives. So those are just some things I'm curious about, not necessarily concerned about because the cost savings is significant and that's pretty obvious when we're looking at the numbers. But I think that there is more to it, um, than just cost savings from, like, academy and, and things like that.
Definitely relay your questions of what you want tracked to the sheriff, so their team can advise that you'd like to throw them the track.
That would be great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
One thing I would, um, kind of be supportive of, out of all that stuff that you just kind of went through, like, anything to help us understand overtime with the sheriffs is a, is a positive to me because I've struggled with that since I was, since I joined the board. I mean, there was, like, really crazy overtime costs and we took some steps to try to mitigate it and it didn't really work. But then they did some stuff and it really did reduce it. I mean, like, so, and then, you know, here we're hearing that, like, it's hard to track how this is gonna, you know, like, so, any, anything that illuminates for the board, like, an understanding of, like, what drives overtime? What helps, you know, reduce and what doesn't help reduce so that we can make the right decisions? Because that's definitely been an issue over the years. I mean, it's, I think it's been managed pretty well recently, but like, the previous sheriff, you know, we had like, it, it came in at like double the amount. We didn't know what to do and we were like, oh my God. And then he was able to, like, pull some internal levers and reduce that quite a bit. Didn't end up being quite as bad as we thought when, when it, when it popped up. And I never totally, you know, different programs seem to affect the overtime, the aggregate overtime in different ways. And not, that, that's not always predictable or logical from my perspective, so.
And in this case, on the corrections side, the, uh, lateral, um, incentives have not been as popular as on the patrol. So there are still overtime issues on the corrections side. We only had one employee that received that, uh, leave bank. So I think on the patrol side, my understanding is they're, they're, um, I believe they filled all of the vacancies and they're in different, um, components of being ready to go and, um, you know, do their rope duties. So just to lay it out there that overtime in the corrections side is still an issue because I think last time I checked, they had twenty vacancies.
One person's not gonna tell you anything about that.
Right, there's just not enough, uh, data.
My, my question is more procedural is, like, I feel like this is the place where we ask those questions, get the questions answered, vet these things out, so that we can have a final product at our meeting that we've already, like, fully cooked. So, you know, like, I, you know, asking what, you know, me asking what those questions are and, you know, hearing that most of them have been answered. You know, it seemed, you know, like, in my mind, I'm like, why don't we put it back on the consent calendar? Or is it, you know, just that you want it out there so it's out there, so it gets voted on independently? Or is it like, or, you know, I, do we get there tonight and then there's gonna be questions that are asked tonight that aren't necessarily gonna be able to be answered on the spot?
Um, I'd like to keep it on department items. There won't be any questions that I have tonight that will influence whether or not I'm gonna vote for this. So that's not really where I'm hung up. It's a transparency matter, making sure that the public has the opportunity to hear it as many times as they can. And at the business meeting, it gives us an opportunity to have a consolidated summary of what's going on with this. Um, and it also gives board members the opportunity to make comments about, you know, where we're at or why we asked the questions that we asked. And it also gives us a ti- you know, an opportunity to mention the things that we hope to have tracked by October. So there are a lot of reasons why it would be beneficial. You're right that almost, or that most of my questions have been answered, but not all have been answered. Um, I just think with programs like this, it's really important to track specific metrics so that we can be telling the public with confidence that we know that this is a successful program. One of the things that Maria mentioned was one of the things I mentioned last week about corrections. Looking at the numbers, it doesn't appear like this program has been as successful. Hopefully the ratified contracts bring in more corrections deputies. But in looking at, you know, some of the information I was provided, it looks like academy cost training is a little bit under five thousand per employee, which is good cost savings, but compared to potential rates of overtime, it could be minimal. And I think that the real benefit here comes a lot from the rapid timeline associated with hiring lateral deputies compared to, you know, yeah. So that's a really good, you know, that's a net positive. But there's just enough details about this program. It's, it's nuanced, it's not black and white. And if this is something that's working, it could be a model for other jurisdictions potentially. Or if it's something that we look at and we're like, well, we don't think that it's quite bringing the benefit that it did initially when we had all these vacancies, then that's something to consider as well. So I just think because it's a new program, you know, um, it's worth having those conversations and continuing to track.
For lateral, there'd be, I, it is, it's almost become the standard for other agencies, is, is these types of bonuses. And I don't know of anywhere else that's doing the leave bank thing, which I think is, is, is fairly novel and, and I, I'm supportive, but...
But the bonuses are not part of this anymore, right? Isn't that part of the proposal?
Correct, that's part is being removed because they were using salary savings, at least.
Yeah.
And so that, on the patrol side, doesn't exist.
And the use of that alleviated our, our woes.
Yeah, so that's more, you know, it's another thing that's changing now. So between now and October, the cost impacts are gonna be different than they were upfront when we had those bonuses. So that's another reason why I think it's important to track this kind of stuff, just to see the differences when we adjust the program.
Okay, very good. Yep. It's not highlighted, but I would, I would love to hear again the specifics of item one.
Tower Kisha?
Yes, yes, sir.
You mean from, from each charge?
Yeah, just go over that again, where we're at, what's going on, what the path forward is and...
Absolutely, Maria, can you?
Sure. So the purpose for updating the, uh, code around the, uh, citizens, uh, commission on salary for elected officials is that when the county moved from three to five districts, um, the, uh, underlying state statute had to be updated and now our code has to be updated to reflect that. So currently, there's only three districts. In doing so, um, the, the state updated the requirements for, um, appointing the board appointees, not the ones that are, um, appointed by, uh, the voter lot. And, uh, based on, uh, feedback, we updated the code so that one position is dedicated to the, um, labor, um, representative, organized labor representative. And the other three positions will be in the field of personnel management or a related field. So, uh, that's what I'll be presenting to you this afternoon. Uh, we did already have a public hearing on this matter, took in the feedback, made some adjustments. And until we actually update the ordinance, the salary commission cannot meet.
I'm really thankful, Commissioners, for, um, Maria's work with our P O's office to look at how to implement the vision on, that the board gave us on that language. I know there were several touchpoints and we appreciate their hard work. Thanks for taking all that conversation and condensing it down into language that actually works that our attorney said, yep, that's the right path that you're supposed to be on.
Okay.
Do you have a few clauses?
Yeah, I want to echo the county manager's gratitude for all the work on this topic. And I did have a question about paragraph two. It seems like maybe, um, the language is loose enough that the board would have some discretion. But I'm curious about the first, um, the sentence that says, three of the persons selected under this subsection. And then it gets to, um, or in a related field other than organized labor. And so it's, you want, we want people with experience in the field of personnel management or related, other than organized labor. And I was wondering what that means? Like I said, it seems flexible enough, the board could have discretion. But like, I was thinking through that and what if there was someone in the field of personnel management, but they also are an organized labor representative? Then would they be excluded based on that language in that first sentence? Or would the board have flexibility when they're considering applications?
My understanding is when these applications come before you, that would be the time to have that discussion. But the language is written is to dedicate an organized labor. And the, then the other three, three seats would be personnel management or related field, and that's where the board has that discretion.
Okay.
I don't think you can pun- I mean, in my two cents, I don't think you can punish someone for other skills that are things that they have if, if they're applying to be a personal management expert and they have that expertise and they convince the board they're the right choice. I don't think you can go, oh, well, you don't get to do it because you have these other skills that are fit other boxes.
Yeah, and I agree with that practically speaking, but then when I look at the contract language or the ordinance language, I just want to make sure that that wouldn't be something, you know...
It'd be for us to debate. I mean, it might be a relevant point for us to decide between competing candidates, but I don't think it invalidates, you know? I think it, it is also important to speak to seeking like a diverse array of, you know, individuals. And if we specify that thou shalt have one in organized labor, then we should seek to find others from, you know, other, other venues. So so that we've got diverse, you know, viewpoints that, that cover, you know, a, a greater array of, you know...
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I like the way that we kind of wrapped this up and tied it up. I just wanted to make sure that that language in the first sentence there wouldn't, like, bar somebody necessarily just because they're a union member. But it sounds like, at least with the Chair's perspective, is we would be able to have that discussion at the time. I just know sometimes when you get into language in an ordinance or a contract of any sort, it can maybe tie our hands in a way that we're not anticipating. So I just wanted to double-check and make sure, um, but I agree with Commissioner Fornier, that we should be seeking diverse pools of applicants.
I, I think if there was three applicants that came in and all they checked was they were from organized labor, were from organized labor, were from organized labor, then you would probably have a scenario where they wouldn't fit into those other boxes. they wouldn't fit into those other boxes.
No, potentially, yeah. But my question is specifically like, if they did have personal management or related, so they checked that box, but they are a, a union member, would they not be, would we not have authorization to appoint that person if they fit? And it sounds like the answer is no. It would be fine. So, yeah, that was my only question for that.
Yeah, I, this one's been fun to, to deal with. Like initially, I thought it was just like an us changing our rules. And I, I guess I missed the boat when it was explained later that, no, this was us adapting to new state law. And that, that kinda changed, that would have changed my thinking from the get-go in, in the way we had the discussions about changing it, because it did feel like we went from being exclusive to more inclusive, and then looking to be slightly exclusive. And really, the state law just came out and, and opened it wide up to anybody. And it wasn't a Thurston County trying to do something novel, it was us adjusting to the, to the new state laws. It's, it's been a fun one to wrestle with.
Well, for me, I've seen enough boards now that I just, if you want a, a board that's not time limited, you want a board that's gonna continue on, and you designate really tight seat like limitations. It may work for a little while, but sooner or later, it's not gonna work.
Yeah, and even though we're a county of three hundred and some thousand people, it's still hard to find that one legal beagle that can come in here and wanna spend time doing it. Yeah, yeah.
Interest, you know, so it, you know, and that's not.
Most challenging seat, the legal. I think in five years, we filled it once.
There's been all kinds of, I mean, I just, I see it in all sorts of contexts. I mean, even at statewide committees that we've got, like in the building code council, we have all these technical advisory committees and all the advisory committees have like seventeen people and it's like a, a union, like, and we debate, I mean, we spend hours debating what should be the, the names of the seats. Like, should it be a building code official that only does residential or a county over three hundred thousand?
Left-handed preferably.
Or should it be just residential building code? Or should it just be any building code official? Like, what's gonna, what's gonna provide the expertise, but also the flexibility to fill the seat? Based on the pool of people that are interested in the topic at hand, I mean, it, it's an art. Absolute art, trying to figure out how to just dial it in so you get the precision you want without tying your hands and not, and having empty seats, which we have in our building code tags. I mean, even though that's super important work and you think there'd be a lot of people, but it's, it's a lot of hours of volunteer time and not everyone has that kind of time.
It is a commitment, it certainly is. And it's a complex question. Salaries, right? Like, we debate it all the time.
Absolutely. Darned elected officials. I, and when we do this, I know that we've been sitting, not sitting on it, we've been working with this for quite a while. And there are applicants that we have in a file. I, I, I would, once this is all solidified, love to see us put out a, a recruitment effort that reflects our finally solidified rules.
If we agreed to do that, I was.
Yeah, I, I know, but then it, you know, I, I know that there's folks that are chomping at the bit to get answers or felt like they've been, you know, put, put on the back burner. And I, I'm like, I'm kind of okay with that because of the circumstances. But, yeah, I'd love to see a, an effort go out once this is solidified. When, if.
Never seen people chomping at the bit to be on salary commission before, so I'm not sure I believe it.
Yeah, yeah. Once we adopt this, or if we adopt this tonight, when, when does it come into effect?
It's, uh, once it's, once you've approved it, it becomes, it goes into effect immediately.
Immediately.
So then we can work, um, I, I believe there's current applications, but we can then do the outreach to garner more interest in it.
Okay, and Commissioner Klaus, I know that you've been asking a lot about that. Is that acceptable that we do a recruitment effort or a public?
I think you would agree.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The more we can get, the better. Um, and then hopefully we can come back after summer recess and have everything we need to be able to make our decision.
And in the interim, we will work with the auditor's office because they're the ones that issue, um, notifications by voter lot based on district and we have a couple of vacancies there, so.
There's the lot ones and then there's the appointed ones. And the lot ones have to outweigh in number the appointed ones.
They have to be the majority. And so, um, the process there is the auditor's office does the outreach. There's a question there that if the individual, if the voter is interested, they return it. And then we bring it to the board and then the board has the final appointment authority for those positions as well.
Um, sorry.
It's a lot of, it's, it's a lot of moving
Yeah, yeah.
pieces to get, uh, to that final decision from a salary commission.
Yeah, no, I'm excited to have this all wrapped up. I think it's great. Um, is there any chance that we could, potentially, Amy, this would maybe be, um, something you could do, just reach out to the people who have pending applications and let them know we're finalizing the ordinance tonight, or whenever you have a chance to reach out, like, hey, we finalized this. You should expect some, to hear something, um, I don't know, whenever the timeline, just so that they have an update. Okay, that would be awesome. Thank you.
A recently read that, I think it was Grace Harbor's Salary Commission, just they simply hang the other elected official's salaries on a percentage of the, is it the judge? What, which one's the one mandated? Is it the Superior Court Judge is the one that's set by law? And it's simply like sixty percent of whatever that is.
We've been told that that's not a proper way to set salaries because it's out of our control. And at the end of the day, this commission has control over your budget and you get to make those decisions. With the exception of your positions, that is set by the salary commission. So different counties have different ways of getting there. Um, in Kitsap, it's a percentage above certain positions. So there's a variety, but I think a majority of the smaller counties in particular do these types of commissions.
All right, so ready to move on. Thank you, Maria.
The next two items are under public defense and first one is funding agreement with Washington State Office of Public Defense belief program.
Thank you so much, Chair. Patrick, our public defender, is in court this morning, but he will be here this afternoon. So Assistant County Manager Josh is able to take these items. I think these were consent items that were moved. Is that correct? So, we moved them, that's why they're highlighted, so we stand ready to.
Okay, so we, they're not anything new.
No.
And it's for the county to receive money for the work being done in public defense.
Any questions on the two items? The next one is a contract with Office of Public Defense for the indigent clients involuntary committee. These are two programs that are funded through, um, OPD and we qualify for funding. So that's the gist of these. And Patrick, can you kinda give?
He'll be here this afternoon to present these items.
They'll be ready to speak.
Any questions on those? All right, thank you. Um, let's write that down. Uh, for Matt, we have two public hearings. Just to remind everyone, annual action plan and the lot discharge industrial procurement. I do not expect much public comment on either. It hasn't been any.
Number word?
So, um, it could be pretty, uh, straightforward and not too lengthy. Okay, well, then that takes us to Commissioner items. We have another executive session proposed under RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one B. Same as the previous, uh, in terms of legal subsection, considering the selection of acquisition of real estate. Public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Is thirty minutes a good amount of time, County Manager?
Good start.
Thirty minutes is our starting point then, so it is ten oh one. We'll be in executive session until ten thirty-one.
Okay, it is ten thirty-six and we are out of the executive session that we set for thirty minutes and extended by five. No legislative actions taken by the board and we have time for any other commissar items. Commissioner Claus, you indicated you have something.
Thank you. So the first one I have is an update on the EFSP funding issues that I brought up at our last business meeting, which is the Emergency Food and Shelter Program through United Way, one of my external committees. And their funding has been significantly disrupted by federal changes. And so I brought that up on June third and I wanted to give another update today after talking late last week with the EFSP and United Way staff team. We, let's see, so what's going on currently is the nonprofits who are impacted are writing letters about what these impacts are gonna be doing to them. I also mentioned when I brought this up on the third that there might be potential for the board to offer support through signing a letter of some sort.
Who's letters going to?
Well, that's what I wanted to talk to the board about. So I wrote a draft letter. I don't have it, I have it ready, but I didn't wanna present a brand-new document today. So I'd be hap- yeah, so I'd be happy to provide that tomorrow or have staff route it and just to kinda see where people stand. My idea, and you can, if anyone has any thoughts, I'd be way open to suggestions, cuz I'm kind of just doing this, you know, as quickly and effectively as possible, but there might be better ideas. So what I did was I took their general letter that they had written to kind of give as a template to all stakeholders. I took the details from that letter along with all the details from all my notes on the matter dating back to last year, and I kinda created a letter that we could write to Marilyn Strickland because they have already reached out to like Senator Cantwell Murray's office and then Chris Murphy's office. And they didn't actually know when we spoke last week that Marilyn Strickland does represent a good portion of the area that covers the providers that receive these funds. They thought that this was not in her district. So when I informed them that Marilyn Strickland's district actually does, you know, have parts of Thurston County and that she would probably be interested in this, they thought that that was really good news. And so my thought was maybe the board could offer a letter to Marilyn Strickland to kinda inform her of what's going on because it doesn't sound like they did that cuz they didn't know she would be interested.
What is the area you're referring to?
Um, it's Thurston and Mason County, so.
It would be Congresswoman Randall as well.
Okay, that's good to know cuz I don't know if they reached out to her.
Marie Perez.
Okay.
Has the, you said this was YMCA?
No, this is United Way.
United Way?
Yeah.
Has United Way reached out to their?
They've, um, they've reached out to Senator Cantwell and Murray and Chris Murphy, who's from Connecticut but sits on one of the committees that would be responsible for these funds at the federal level. So those are the three that they mentioned they reached out to. But no, they didn't mention Emily Randall or MGP or Marilyn Strickland. So I did write a letter that could be easily adjusted to send out to multiple people if there are suggestions on anyone else we could include. But I kinda was wondering what the board would like to see since we go on summer recess so soon. Would it be feasible for me to try to have staff route a letter for us to then approve as a board tomorrow? Or would it be more advisable for me and the chair to work together since we're going on recess maybe later this week? Just so that you could sign it as the chair? Or what would the board prefer to do? I guess, is there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was, I'm looking towards the clerk of protocol of adding the letter on to commissar's item for the agenda tomorrow.
At this point in time, we cannot add it to the nine AM boardwork session.
The afternoon commissar's check-in. I would recommend, because then at that point, the board can decide if it's either the chair or it's everyone.
Send your draft around, sorry.
I'd like to read it and see and get specifics.
That way it's out for the public. We can check it and.
Can you repeat what the letter is asking the delegation to do?
Yeah, definitely. And then I had an, what was my other question?
I think we see Marilyn tomorrow and we see Perez's in tonight or tomorrow.
Okay. And just to let the board know, I s- I finished this draft last night, late last night around ten and sent it to the United Way staff to look at first, which is why I didn't send it directly to our management staff cuz I wanted them to say, yes, this looks accurate, especially when it comes to the dollar amounts. I'm pretty sure that it's accurate, but I wanted them to just give it a look over. But the.
So there's a United Way luncheon tomorrow?
Yep.
Will that, will that be a part of the discussion? Is it?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I know that I am planning on touching base with Kathy and Rodetta, who are my points of contact at United Way. They could bring it up tomorrow. Maybe, I'm not sure if it's on their agenda or not, but it is really important, so I'm, I wouldn't be surprised if it was brought up tomorrow.
Is our letter asking, or stating to the representatives that this funding's important?
So.
Because it, you know, cuz I heard, I thought I heard you say that it was to inform them of the situation. I think it'd be more appropriate that United Way informs them of the situation that their funding's being taken, et cetera.
Definitely, and they're working on doing that as much as they can, but they don't necessarily have the connections or the understanding of who to reach out to and why it's important. And it's to raise awareness, but also the requests are, I'm asking, and this is another thing I would love the board's feedback on. I'm asking for them to request a written update from FEMA on the current status of these reimbursements and a projected timeline because these are funds that were not only appropriated, but incur, we encourage, we as in United Way and EFSP encouraged our service providers locally to spend those funds last year so that they could be reimbursed. And so those funds, those funds have been spent. And now nonprofits have already, you know, done all of their services, completed their services and now the money that was appropriated to be used for reimbursement is not being used for reimbursement.
Ouch.
Yeah, so, and for small organizations like that, I mean, we're talking like Salvation Army, Family Support Center, the Food Bank, Roof, like there's some, the Senior Center, there's some really important organizations on here and just a couple thousand dollars can be so significant programs like that. So it's a big deal. And there's a couple different parts of what's going on. So the Phase forty-two is what we're in now. And so we want, so I'm asking, please request a written update from FEMA. Please advocate for the immediate release of all approved reimbursements for phases thirty-nine through forty-one. And that includes the expenses incurred as far back as November twenty-twenty-one. Support the prompt dispersment of Phase forty-two funds, which is the funding that has been appropriated but not necessarily spent yet. So that local boards can continue serving the community. And then number four is I'm asking to please just coordinate with colleagues. So, yeah.
Has your letter been reviewed by the director, Chris?
Um, I sent it last night and I'm waiting. I asked them to please have their feedback to me today.
That's why you haven't seen it yet. She wanted to get United Way's thumbs up.
Yeah, just on those specifics like.
Cuz it sounds like it should be Chris reaching out to the delegation and then we would write a letter of support for what you're requesting rather than the county leading charge on another organization's behalf.
Well, that's what they've done. They've reached out to a couple folks, but not everyone we mentioned this morning.
In writing?
In writing, yeah. That's what my understanding is. And they haven't heard back from Patty Murray's office yet. They did hear, or maybe I have that wrong. Maybe they didn't hear back from Cantwell's office, but I'll, I'll get clarification on.
So is everything that you've laid out in the, in those requests and then we can just say we support that? Is that what you're saying, county manager?
Yeah, it just seems odd that the county, wherever they should take the letter, they've submitted to. If, if this is a conversation about them needing to know all the, all the delegation they should be sending it to, then we can simply provide them a list, but that letter should be sent to everybody. And then United Way should just reach out to jurisdictions and say, can you provide a letter of support or effort? And then we signal to our delegation that we are supportive of United Way's effort. Because if we're writing on behalf of United Way, that just seems a little bit odd to me.
Yeah, there, there, all of our federal representatives are saying, hey, let us know what's going on on the ground and how you guys are being affected. Like, they're being very clear cuz they don't, they don't, they're out of, they're, they told us they're finding out things on Twitter. And so like, it seems appropriate for United Way or whoever to reach out and say, hey, this is how we're being affected. And then we are able to highlight, yes, this is important to us. We support their letter. That is, I, that's a, I think that's the right approach.
Okay, that makes sense.
Maybe you and I can work with Chris to kinda figure out where they're at and how we move it forward.
Okay, so then what would the board, just before we go on summer recess, what would the board like for us to do in the, like, in the coming days before we're all gone for recess? Work with county manager, work with Chris, so that United Way has their letter and then we're just supporting that letter. And so who would write that letter of support to have it framed the right way? Would that be?
I can sign, I mean, it should be a board member. If we're not all able to corral each other cuz we're all different places, it should be, then me would be the next best thing.
Yeah.
Just, and I can, and it can be stated, on behalf of unanimous board of county commissioners, I am urging you to support the United Way's
Okay.
requests in the attached letter or whatever.
I'm sure I'll be able to sign it.
Yeah, I, I, and I. Do vice chair, vice chair or whatever. I mean, rather than having it, it's like, if, if we're all in agreement, I either want it just to be the, you know what I mean? You don't want somebody missing.
Yeah.
Cuz then it means, then it's like you're, you're not really being honest.
Yeah.
If we can get the letter straight into the board, what United Way has already sent representatives.
Okay, I can do that.
That'd be helpful so that you know, cuz that, actually that, take that letter, retool it for the next representative and then if there's anything specific in their district that you wanna highlight, give them a flavor of them, what we're gonna draft as a, hey, we support United Way's effort to get these things done that they reference in their letter. And it sounds like the chair is willing to sign that up on behalf of the board.
And I don't think that what they've provided so far has been a letter. I think they've been exchanging emails back and forth with the offices of these representatives. So, because what they sent me was like a draft of what looked a lot like a letter, but they were like, this, this needs to be adjusted. So it wasn't a final version of anything. So I took that draft, which was intended for them to send out to all their stakeholders, including the nonprofits, on language they could use in their letters. So I took that and kinda tried to make it specific to something we could ask for. So yeah, I'll work with Kathy and Chris.
I think having a letter is nice from everybody. Then you can pub, you can post that publicly. You can share that with whoever and emails don't have the same.
Yeah, and I would encourage United Way to be the one to send out their first letter because we can't speak to the realities of their situation. They need their executive director who would probably have to get this approved by their board. And I wouldn't want, not wanna overstep in the spirit of trying to be helpful.
Yeah, well, that's what we did cuz I'm a member of that board and that's what we did at the last meeting was approve for this to start moving, like some sort of letter, which is why they gave us the draft letter. So that's kind of the process that's happened, but it's ongoing now. So that's why I wanted to raise it today so that the board kinda had an update before we leave. And if we were able, so once I get ahold of the folks from United Way today, if we were able to come up with like, they finalize a letter, we have a letter of support from the board or a le- something saying we support their letter. If all of that was ready and packaged, by what time? Would, what time would we need it to the, for the board to be able to approve it tomorrow afternoon?
Well, can be added to the agenda. What's this cut on?
Be ideal if we receive it by one-thirty PM today, so it can be added to the agenda and posted.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions or things I should think about as I'm finishing this up today?
I think the points are.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other commissar items? I know you have a second one, but before I go back to Commissioner Claus, does anyone have anything they need to address? Okay, Commissioner Claus.
Okay. Yeah, just one more. Hopefully this one will be quick. I sent a letter, or an email last week to the county manager regarding an idea to post some signage at county public-facing buildings related to knowing your rights for immigration. I know this has been an ongoing issue. It's becoming extremely scary. Things are happening locally with people being arrested by federal enforcement agents. And I think one of the quickest, easiest things the county can do is provide information for people to know their rights when interacting with federal enforcement. And we've seen tons of examples of ICE agents or DHS agents at courts waiting for people to have their cases heard. And even, you know, yeah, so I'm, to not, I don't wanna go into all the details about what we've seen, but we know it's really a bad situation. So I was hoping that the board could, this is another thing that I'm bringing up because we're going on recess. And I'm hoping the board. So I was hoping that the board could, this is another thing that I'm bringing up, because we're going on recess and I'm hoping the board could help. Provide direction to staff to start the process of posting signage and I did send out, um, attachments that. I think were circulated, um, hopefully to the board. Um, but this is just a copy of the signage and there's also, um, an attachment of. What a warrant looks like, a valid warrant compared to, um, you know, warrants that are being used that aren't. Valid, because they're either not signed by a judge or they're not the right type of warrant. Um, and so both of these attachments were provided on the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network website. Um, which is an organization that, you know, is reputable, they have a lot of resources online that are available, that are. Providing accurate information, so, um, I was hoping that we could post these at. Public facing buildings like the atrium, the courthouses, and then I know some spaces are under the authority of elected officials. Like the jail, um, and the courts, but anything that is staff controlled, I'd like us to have that posted immediately. And then hopefully provide direction to the County Manager to work with. Um, facilities or other electeds that are responsible for other public facing buildings to get that posted there as soon as we can.
So question, um, you, Commissioner Mejia and I attended a training. And it looked to me like this information was the same information that was recommended to use at that training, is that correct?
Very similar, I don't know if it was Weisen specifically, but it's the same information, so yeah, this is just. I think maybe it was this organization or maybe it was ACLU, but each org, yeah, they have.
I saw your email on Friday, I think, and. Jogged in memory as I was driving to work today that we actually did something exactly like this in twenty-twenty. When we had the person arrested in, um, in, in our courthouse parking lot. And the commissioner's response to that included, um, a pant- like a pamphlet that we had. I don't know if it was exactly like Know Your Rights, I think it might have been more like Immigrant Resources or something, but something did get, um. I remember debating and I think I brought it forward frankly, I don't remember, but, um. Anyway, whether that's still there, I just wanted to throw that out there that we have i- in the past, like responded with this type of a response. It's, um, kind of like, I think if you go to the courthouse, Commissioner Mejia probably know better than me, you see stuff about like. Domestic violence victims and defendants, like there's all sorts of like knowing your rights kind of information that's we have at the courthouse, so anyway, I. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't have a prob- it was a recommended step at the training that you and Commissioner Mejia and I attended, so I am supportive. Yes, Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you, I actually. So when I first received the email, um. I asked the National Association of Hispanic County Officials what they've been doing across, um. The, uh, US and everyone has a, a different response and. You, you know, I, I wanna be clear that. Protecting immigrant communities to me is very important. As an immigrant myself, uh, what I was doing this weekend is I was fielding calls because. I think it was over fifty thousand immigrant community members received a, a text message from Homeland Security who have pending cases. Um, to show up and, uh. I was trying to get them the correct information, um, of, of what to do. And so. As I'm thinking on the signage, my concerns come from. Are we providing legal advice? Um, specifically on the do not open the door unless the agent shows a signed warrant piece. Um, that can be considered legal ga- guidance, it can be interpreted as such and. If we're putting any kind of language out there, I just wanna be sure that there is legal review at least. Risk review, because I don't wanna put the county in a situation where, um. There's a difference between off immigrant resources, like it was done in, back in twenty-twenty of like, these are, you know. Specific things that you can access and then actually having, um, something of Know Your Rights. And, you know, just based on the language that I saw there, I was like, well. I, I would wanna see if we are giving any kind of, you know, it can be interpreted as us giving a legal, any kind of legal advice. You know, I have the cards, uh, that I hand out, um, you know, as I've been speaking with community members. Um, but I would also like to have a conversation with immigrant community members, um. On whether this would be helpful to them, because right now, I mean. People are even sh- scared to show up to anything government related. And so if we're gonna have. Yeah, and so if we're gonna have, I mean, church, like, i- it's just any kind of activities, people are going to work and going back home and. Um, you know, it's, they're, um. Sending their kids to the grocery stores, they're buying lettuce instead of, uh, or they're buying cabbage instead of lettuce, that's the ongoing. Um, but it's. It's a very harsh, like, reality, and so I'm like, when I'm thinking about like, I know where your heart is coming from is, is from a good place and. Uh, but I also want to be sure that if there is. This investment that we're gonna make, which I don't even know how much that would cost and then, you know, if we're gonna get into that, then it's like, okay, well. As things are changing so much and, um. ICE has, you know, from where this first came out, the Know Your Rights to where we are now. They have completely changed how they've done business and they've done, they continue to adapt and, um. I mean, sending text messages, asking you to show up for a hearing and then doing, that was something that. In all my years of being, practicing immigration, I'd never seen before, and so. You know, then who's going to be updating, because there's, you know, as, as immigration attorneys are seeing this, they're trying to get. As much updated infor- information out there and so who's go, you know, how often are we gonna be updating these and so, um. I, I would want, before, like, we're, we're committing to anything, I, I would like, um. Legal, uh, to review this, um. I would like some time to touch base with communities that are being affected by this, um. And see if this is truly, you know, like, i- is this going to be helpful, um? Or can we invest the resources that we're going to s- invest on signage, can we invest those resources in other things? And. So that's just kind of just my thoughts as I was processing this, this whole thing. I didn't have, again, much time to, I was dealing with personal family matters last week. Um, and so it wasn't something where I was able to. Really dig in and get as much information as I would have liked and then, um, as I was getting reached out by. Several community members over the weekend, um. You know, it was, it wasn't on the top of the, my mind to ask them how they feel about this, it was about safety and, um.
So is maybe sending through to legal for review? Yeah, I, I, I have some thoughts and, like, uh, you know, government moves slow for reasons and I know it can be frustrating. And, uh, you know, I, I think that, I, I think, I, I appreciate the, the, you know, the spirit and, and. Your intentions and I think they're, they're, uh, admirable and, and in the right place. But like, you know, I, I also read these emails, uh, I, and so maybe my issues are more procedural. That, you know, like, w- we're, we know that we're not supposed to send each other mass emails, right? You know, I can't send an email to every commissioner trying to, uh, push for a policy thing. Because that's, you know, that, well, it's violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Doing it to proxies, our, uh, our EAs is essentially the same thing. You know, so I, I wanna caution anyone from, you know, if we're trying to push something, even though, and, and we're trying to, you know, we're saying this is urgent. Uh, you know, I, I used to have a note on my door when I was mayor that said, if you need the answer yes right now, the answer will always be no. Because there's nothing that we can't like, slow down and talk through. You have, that's the way half, government has to work, so like emailing all the EAs, I think is, is, is. Skirting the line and probably not meeting the intent of the OPMA. Cause the fact is, we just heard from all commissioners saying, yeah, I read that email from you, yeah, so that's probably not a good practice. You know, yeah, and I also read that you saying, well, I'm not violating the OP, you know, it's like. And you, you, you did your homework to make sure you're not, but you're probably are like. At, at an edge that you don't want us all out, cause it also, it opens up the, the door for. Problems, because then what am I supposed to do with that? I'm, well, I'm gonna respond to, you know, and send it back to the County Manager saying, hey, I think this and then. He's, and then, so then all of a sudden, there, we've got a serial meeting, so I, like, his, his advisement on not doing that. I think was good advisement, but then it was also disregarded and like, I felt like. When I read it and, you know, you can't put emotion and thoughts and try to glean out intentions in just texts. But like, I, I understand urgency on your part. And then when the system is saying, oh, slow down, these are the steps, getting frus- that, that's, that's not obstruction of your efforts. That's guidance on how to get your efforts moving forward, so like, please, you know, take, take that. You know, as it is, so, so I, I too concerned, I, I too shared concerns of, of. Kind of putting us in a bad situation when it goes out that way. Um, I, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Mejia that, uh, uh, you know, before this. Goes any further, that there would need to be legal review. Uh, for me, posting any third party organization signage on public buildings is problematic. Um, it's not our message, it's their message, uh, I don't know if, I'm not saying it's a good message or a bad message. But, you know, if we already have a policy or we have state law that speaks to it. And I, I, I believe we have the, what the Washington Right to Work Act is, is something that. Keep Washing and Working Act is something that we have that is, that is state law, so, you know, it may be that we. Post the state law and, and being, you know, more within our, our scope. And, and not, you know, risk scope creep, I, I, I would, you know, this brings to me the desire to. Establish a policy on, uh. What we allow posted on our buildings, so. Having to, some type of signage policy that, that speaks to, you know, we will not, you know. Put up signs that are of a religious nature, ideological nature, uh, you know, outside party. Interest groups that we have not, uh, signed formal agreements with, so like, I would ask that we now. Take, you know, take some steps to start drafting up some kind of policy that, that it, that speaks to this, so that. You know, in the future, we've got a little more guidance on how we deal with this, but I, I would want, before we do anything, I would want. At least a full legal review of the language to make sure that we're not, you know, stepping over our, our, stepping outside of our boundaries.
The pamphlet that was released in twenty-twenty, do you know what happened to it?
I don't, it may still be there, as far as I know, I don't, I just don't remember, I just remember a conversation like this and a response by the board to. Put something at the courts related to what was happening, what happened at the, at our courthouse in twenty-twenty, June of twenty-twenty.
I did talk with Judge Skinder about that last week, um, I don't, he didn't tell me that I can recall if it's still there, but he did say that after. The county took that action, there were no further problems at the courthouse, so he thought it was effective.
I, that brings another issue to mind, like the, the judiciary is in charge of. The courtrooms and their buildings and they're responsible for it, the same with. The sheriff's buildings, those are independently elected offices, that I don't know that it's right for individual commissioners to go and talk to them about. What they display, how they display, because those are like broader policy questions that we. As a group should be in agreement and going in a united fashion to speak to them on. So I, like that.
Yeah, that doesn't.
I, I, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I, I don't feel like I should go. I, if, I, I would feel like I was doing something wrong if I was to go to the judge and be like, hey, I think you should have this on the front of your building.
We have a standing recurring meeting monthly and it fell last week and this was a topic of conversation, it was not me going out of my way to have. An additional conversation with the judge, which is well within my right as an elected official, by the way, to talk to another elected official.
I understand that.
Um, but, yeah.
Plus, it's our building, I, I think you're actually not right about that, I think we can tr- they don't control their buildings, we control their buildings. Facilities and they, they control the courtroom and it can per- the adjudication of proceedings, but I think. We handle.
And we maintain them.
We fund them and we. I, I mean.
I would be curious about that, cause I, my, my thing is I, I would say we maintain them, but. How they display things and how they present.
Cooperation with them and like, like you're reminding me, Commissioner Klaus, cause I'd forgotten, but this, that was fully within. What we did was in coordination with the courts, uh, it was a mutually agreed that it was a good thing we did. And I, like I say, I can't remember what verbiage was on it, it might not have been exactly like this. But it was something that, and Commissioner, sounds, and can, Judge Skinder is, remembers it, so I'm not. I just remembered this on the, we're driving over here this morning, that we did that, I'd totally forgotten and I was like, you know, that was a thing we did, I, we actually had, this is a precedent for this. I, I guess, I would just say that the training that I went to, um, there were like five steps recommended for elected officials. To take, local officials to take, this was number one, this was like the thing they were like, okay. We know that some of these other things might be resource constrained or controversial, but this is one thing you can all do. Shouldn't cost you any money, it shouldn't be too controversial, it's basic, so I mean, that's why I, I'm kind of support, trying to support Commissioner Klaus, cause. I walked away from that training thinking, okay, we should probably get around to doing that, I just haven't had a chance to put my brain to it, cause I was basically ill all last week, but. It was on my list to sort of talk a discussion about what we could do or should do. Um, whether it's this or something, I'm all for legal review and making sure that there isn't something here that's problematic, so I. My request would be to take Commissioner Mejia's suggestion and have this sent for legal review and some input. Before we do anything and that's gonna delay things obviously till probably after recess, but that would be my suggestion.
I think if we have the pamphlet.
Unfortunately, I don't think this is going away.
Um, no, it's not, it's not going away, um, but I think if we find the pamphlets, right, we can also, I mean. Something that's al- also already been reviewed, it's been approved by both the courts and previous Board of Commissioners. I mean, we can start there while this is going through the process, um, and I'm not sure. Um, I remember it, um, but not sure.
Can't remember where it came from, is what I'm.
It was, um, it was put together.
Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance?
Yeah, it was, it was Strengthening Sanctuaries and it was, you know, they sent like, uh, proposal over to the courts and then. Uh, the court, the BOJ at that point. Edited and kind of, you know, just to be sure that it was under their rules and whatever they can show at the, at the courthouse and. Um, so it was, and then I believe it came to the board or I'm not sure if it was. So.
I, I think, um, you know, this is an important topic, asking the County Manager to do some research. Obviously, there's history here to find out what we've done in the past, so that we can bring back a sense, do we have the pamphlet? Do we wanna revitalize the pamphlet, I mean, and then to Commissioner's point of there needing to be some legal review. That, that would be a normal process to give us time to operate and to look at this, so that we make sure we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. I think my perspective is, I'm, we're, we're being more cautious because in the spirit. in the spirit of saying, yes, we don't want things to jump forward like they have in the past, and then it caused so much confusion and heartache, my first response is gonna be, let me look at it, let me talk to folks, so that we can figure out what's the right course, and that shouldn't be perceived as any obstruction, that's just us wanting to do our due diligence for the entire board.
Can I ask, just to clarify, when you say in the past things have moved forward that have caused so much confusion and heartache, what you're referring to?
The internship program.
Okay. Okay.
I think that sounds like we're all- Kind of should the county manager to, to, dot some Is and cross some Ts and bring this back.
I'd like to, I think that's a good idea, I really appreciate Commissioner Mejia's points, I think that's really important. Is there anything, like, more specific that we could give direction on, so that if there's a potential, like, if the county manager goes and gets a legal review, and that comes back before we're done with summer recess, would we be able to then have staff initiate postage of these signs or whatever is determined by legal, so that we don't have to wait till we get back from recess if this is all cleared?
Are we posting, is the, is the, is it, are they pamphlets that we want to put out, are they signage? Are they, is there certain locations, like, just, like, when you, just trying to get a sense of what that might look like, what are you thinking?
So what I was thinking was, signs, either like, on the door or on a stand, when you walk in, you see a sign like this.
At all county facilities?
At public-facing buildings, so that would be the atrium, what I could recall just offhand was the atrium, the courts, potentially the jail, if we were able to coordinate that with the, with the team there. And then, I think that might be the only ones that I could think of, but if there are other public-facing buildings, I would want to include all of them.
The Wastion Recovery Center, Attila Campus, I mean, there's, like-
I would want legal review, I would want coordination with those who are responsible for the buildings, because I, I, the jail, the sheriff's responsible for the jail, and my, and my thoughts and opinions, and the same with the courthouses, and I would want to know costs, I would want to know who's responsible for the signs, who's gonna maintain the signs.
That's gonna take us some time to round that up, we won't be able to do that before we go into recess.
And then we'd need to come back and agree on it at that point, once we've done the evaluation, we can't pre-approve something we haven't vetted.
I think there's too many, and for me, I want the judges, if, whatever is displayed across, I want collaboration with the judges, I just don't think we can pre-approve something that, there are too many details to, to do what you suggest, in my estimation.
Okay.
I think we're gonna have to take this up when it comes back after July.
Okay, I mean, we're seeing multiple arrests in Thurston County every week, or every, you know, in the last couple of weeks, what I know of are at least three, and that's just what I know of, and, you know, so this is happening rapidly.
Maybe you should get a stack of these and go paste them up all over, be it Lacy, I mean-
I already have that and others that are relevant to-
It's gonna be way more valuable to be like at Safeway and on downtown Capital City Guitar than it is in the atrium, I can guarantee you. Because Commissioner Mejia is right, like, no immigrants coming into a government building right now.
No ones, they're zooming into court, like, courtrooms.
Yeah, I appreciate the urgency, but I think that-
That's true, yeah.
It tells a good point.
No, absolutely, but also it's just like the spread of information too is a benefit, regardless of whether it's an immigrant or a family of immigrants coming into a building, it could be someone who knows a family that sends them a picture, it's-
Yeah, I think it's, no, but I would just say in terms of the urgency thing, you know, it's gonna be, this can go anywhere,
Yeah.
without our approval. Yeah, but I'm, I can, having flyer for banned Ben's, I can know exactly where to flyer, every corner of this county.
Sell t-shirts.
Okay, so that's, I think as far as we can go on that item.
I didn't, did you give me a formal direction?
I think there was an agreement to, basically your suggestion, county manager.
What about the idea of developing some type of policy regarding external signage and use of public buildings?
I already have the team looking at what we have, do we have anything in place, but we can make that part of the research-
Yeah, if it doesn't exist already.
Any other commissioner items this morning?
Just to the point of the copying of aides, if you send me an email and you copy all the aides, I can't respond back, because now we're having a dialogue, so it'd be best if you engage me to not copy the aides, because we did talk to our legal team, and they said, it is getting very, very close to the edge of a serial meeting once there starts to be discourse, because your aides are your representatives, your delegates, and so just, and the buttons of caution, in the environment, which is a lot of public information requests right now, I think we're at a record high, so, just advisement is more just to make sure we're not running aground and everything is being done appropriately.
I think that sounds great, and I would also add that a number of times, there have been requests to memorialize some of these processes by putting them in writing, and I'm not sure why that hasn't happened, but it would be extremely helpful to me, and my executive aide, as well as other executive aides that have expressed this to me, that having some of these processes in writing would be extremely helpful. It's really hard to remember the process for every single thing when there's different timelines for different types of correspondence, so I would appreciate having some of that stuff written down, so that it, you know, we don't have to remember something, a conversation, when weeks and months go by and things change. I think this will be a part of the bylaws conversation too.
Should we schedule an additional Open Public Meetings Act training?
We were working with Travis on that, and asked him to talk about this specifically, this isn't something that's coming from the county manager, this is their guidance.
No, totally, and I mean processes for everything, like the getting something on the agenda, how long in advance you want it, that should go too.
That's the discussion we're having about bylaws, that I think is important, but thank you clerk for sending that email out, it was a couple of weeks ago, and we're working on that actively.
Cool. Yeah, as changes are being made in the county manager's office that have been made prior to the bylaws conversation, I just think it's important to, you know, like, not beat around the bush, there have been policies and processes changed in the last year with nothing put in writing, and so now we're having conversations about bylaws, which is great, and I think it'll alleviate some of the stress that has been caused by these procedural changes, but I'm acknowledging the fact that there are procedural changes that have come from the county manager's office that are unclear and they're not put in writing. So, outside the bylaws conversation, outside the OPMA, there are other things like wanting two weeks' notice for Board of Health members to add something to the agenda, just as an example I'm throwing out, but there have been a number of changes like that, that have been unclear or they've changed multiple times, and they haven't been put in writing.
Those are conversations we've had here, though.
Right.
To request those changes, so those conversations happen here.
Not every time. There hasn't been conversation for every one of those changes, so that's partly why it makes it complicated to keep up.
And just having read your emails, which I shouldn't have been able to, my suggestion, friendly suggestion is, you know, if it's unclear, ask, and then if it's explained, you know, follow that advice.
Yeah, and again, I'm talking about the broader issue, not talking about OPMA right now or bylaws or the one email, I'm talking about broadly, I've had numerous staff, including other executive aides, who may have expressed their concerns to their commissioners, that these things aren't, the new processes aren't in writing, and it's confusing for people, so, this isn't just me speaking on behalf of myself, this is me saying there have been a number of concerns that, that are unclear, so it's not just a matter of me going and asking somebody a question and getting it resolved, it's a matter of people in our office not knowing what to do or how to do it.
Okay, so one last thing, since we're at the, toward the deadline for the commissioner's check-in agenda tomorrow. Commissioner Grant, who's not here, I've seen two emails come through from her about wanting to talk about an item, so I'm just wondering, and this is gonna be the last chance to do any of that before there's a commissioner break.
Talk about an item right now?
Well, they sounded like commissioner items, so I'm wondering, can they be, has she requested, or can they be put on tomorrow afternoon so that they get addressed, and not kind of, we all get blindsided by them?
The only one I'm aware of, what is the Cabin Road?
Yeah, that was the first one, then this morning, apparently, there was one related fireworks discussion.
Okay, I'll look into that, but if it's a request, we'll get it added.
So just, I know we're like, you know, to get on there, to get on there formally, it would need to be on there soon. So I guess I'm just kind of speaking for Commissioner Grant, because she sent those two emails out, and I know we're kind of at the end of the, at the, at the line.
For tonight's meeting?
No, no, I think it's tomorrow's-
And then I just, there was an email-
We were just told by Amy that we couldn't add something else to the commissioner's check-in.
Commissioner's check-in is tomorrow at 1:30 PM, so the agenda needs to be finalized and updated and reposted by 1:30 PM today with any additions.
We'll take a look at the request and-
Lock Cabin Road, there was an email that came out about it.
Yeah.
Maybe just check with Ashley, I mean, she probably knows whether Commissioner Grant wants to pursue those, I just, without her here, and having seen the emails, I just don't want those balls to drop through.
I think we added Lock, um, Lock Cabin Road onto tomorrow's conversation.
And sent to Commissioner's e-brief today.
We'll also be, we'll also be sending out something about fireworks, since it's the time to talk about that anyways, so I'll get, we'll get that out today.
Yeah, that was informational, apparently, she's starting to hear what I've heard for seven years, from some community members about fireworks, and so, she has a whole ton of questions, which I have all the context to, maybe I could just meet with her, but it sounded like she wanted to bring it for board discussion.
I was like in that, there is a lot of history with, in terms of fireworks, there's a lot of discussion, it comes up every year, it's come up every year as I've been in this seat, and it's also a docket item, I think it got removed last year, not sure if it were landed, but I think it got on the pending preliminary, there we go. So I, I think that sending out, like, all this information would be very useful, because it's a lot, and I know some of our community members feel strongly one way or another, and, but we also have to think about the tribal relationship in there as well, and kind of that sovereignty, so.
There's a lot of things to balance, I think Ashley and Ben created a great summary that we probably get out this afternoon to everybody.
Yeah, just throwing fireworks on tomorrow's agenda is problematic for me, I've been through 15 years of that happening, and then everyone forgets that you can't just ban fireworks the week before 4th of July, you can enact a rule that doesn't, will not take place until an entire year later, and so, if misunderstood, it turns into a big, weird, uncomfortable conversation that nobody really understands.
We'll share this feedback with Ashley and see if Commissioner Grant would like just to speak to you, since you can update her, and we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, or maybe she'll just, do you have a conversation that you're planning regarding the, this year's designation or whatever, could, you know, would kind of suffice as the agenda item. Is that coming up tomorrow?
Gonna send an email out, but many of you are aware of the process, I think Commissioner Grant can look at that email, see the process,
Yeah.
and we can see if she had any questions from there.
All right, yeah, either way, thank you.